Is that better? I got one thing right. At this time, I would like to welcome Reverend Dr. Franklin Watkins from Oak Grove Baptist Church to lead us in our invocation this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Let us bow for what a prayer. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings. Thank you today as we come to this meeting, this Harrisburg, Harrisburg Town Meeting. We just pray and we ask your, your blessings be upon it that you would come and be with us that we might govern properly. We pray, Heavenly Father, you would give us wisdom and knowledge through your Holy Spirit that we will be able to do things that would improve our community. Help us, God, to vote for the community and for all of the people. We pray, God, that you would lead us, direct us, and guide us now bless us as we go forward. It's in the Jesus name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, we have one special presentation on the agenda and Mallory Hodgson will be presenting. It's the upcoming Public Utilities and Transportation Grant Funding available to the town.
Hi Mallory. Hi, thank you guys. Well, it's good to be presenting in front of you guys again tonight. Thank you for having me to present this. I wanted to give an overview of some of the upcoming grant opportunities that the town has recognized and some information on just everything that that entails. So before I start, I'm just going to kind of give an overview of what my presentation will entail. I'm going to give a little bit of background information on grants for anyone in the audience that's not familiar with them. Explain why there's so much funding on the horizon and then describe the town's efforts to obtain some of that grant funding. And then I'll give a update on some of the applications we've already submitted. So grants one-on-one, so a grant is a way for the government to fund projects. It could be for public services to stimulate the economy, different projects that we've identified. So for Harrisburg, we're typically getting that money from either state or federal level. There's eligibility requirements and an application process that's followed, and then sometimes they'll require a match. So sometimes the town would need to put up a percentage of those grants. And then sometimes their administrative fees or inspection fees or things like that. A lot of times grants will have stricter funding administration requirements than some of our own projects. So there may be a little bit more stringent like minority business enterprise or women-owned business type of levels that we have to meet. There might be more stringent inspection requirements, reporting requirements or things of that nature. So we're trying to make sure that we have the capacity as a team here at the town before we accept any money like that. So wanted to give kind of a really, really brief overview of how the American Rescue Plan is impacting the grant funding right now. So back in March 2021, our president signed the American Rescue Plan Act into law. Two months later, the US Treasury released the interim final rule guidance on the allowable uses for those funds. And then a few days later, Governor Cooper released his state fiscal recovery fund budget recommendations. Those were finalized that same month back in 2021. Those recommendations were used to shape how the ARP funds could be used by the state and distributed to the local governments. And one important thing that I wanted to mention was that all the money has to be spent by the end of the year 2026. So about four years on this money. So some of the ways that the money could be used, and we've already received some dispersments of this from the state, but funding COVID-19 mitigation efforts, addressing negative economic impacts, replacing lost public sector revenue, premium pay for essential workers, those top four items that I'm sure you all are very familiar with. And then investing in water sewer broadband infrastructure and making necessary investments to improve clean water and support wastewater and stormwater infrastructure. Those are the ones that we're focused on. So the, the plan funneled money into the states to distribute to the municipalities and other organizations. So we have to apply to the state to get that money, not the federal government. Another thing I want to mention is the Build America By America Act. That's another requirement that's going to come into play on these grants, but it's, it's really interesting is that all the materials have to be made in America. So that's one thing that we have to, will have to be aware of on these projects is the local sourcing of our building materials and things like that. So I'm going to talk about the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Grants because they received a large bucket of money and they received it in a couple of different ways. And the first was a viable utility reserve, $119 million available there. This money is primarily for distressed local government units. We are not a distressed local government either. There are things that go into play such as budgets and how, how a town like appropriates money to the water and sewer fund, whether their water and sewer fund is in the green or in the red. We're obviously well in the green, doing very well. And we also don't have any high-risk utilities. So one of the, we don't qualify as high-risk utilities from the state's definition, but we do have aging infrastructure in need of replacement. So we threw some stuff out there to see if it would stick. Two of the projects that we applied for were Cabarrus Woods Waterline, which was taken on by the town in the early 2000s. It was already kind of not in a good shape at the time. It's scheduled for replacement. That project will start early 2023. So we thought, well, maybe we can get some construction funding or construction dollars for this. They were rejected in the spring round, but will automatically be considered in the fall round. So I'm hopeful that we might get some additional funding from there. We also applied for a pump station decommissioning project that was the, and I want to reiterate that these projects are already funded with our CIP, but we're trying to supplement. And we're also seeing that a lot of our construction costs are coming in higher than some of our estimates just due to material availability, contractor availability, things like that. So we're, there's good reason for us to chase down some of the grant funds. The State Reserve Program also was dedicated money by ARPA. $28 million was available from the state for study and training grants. So those could be used for things like asset inventory assessments, looking at our system and determining where the weak spots are. We can use those for things like developing a water model, developing a improved CIP or like 20-year CIP, things of that nature. So we were actually awarded $400,000 from the spring application process. We have a few steps we have to go through to actually recognize that money, but staff is working on that and we're, we're really excited about that opportunity. That money will be used for two projects that were funded in the CIP, which were the 20-year capital improvement plan and an improved water model. So we want to be able to identify our own water source and like water, water treatment sources. Another really incredible funding opportunity for the town is the Ryan Cabarrus Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO. This is a, this is funding opportunities that funnels down from the federal to state government through NCDOT. We recently applied for a surface transportation block grant for three projects. The total was about 13, 14 million dollars. We think it's highly likely that funding will be awarded and there, there'll be a final vote later this month. And then there's an upcoming bike ped grant for $4 million. And I want to say these, these totals are the total fund. So we're applying for a portion of these dollars. So Bike Ped Grant is a $4 million fund and that's, I'm expecting the, the call for projects any day. And we've got a project prepared to submit for that. There's also another grant coming through the MPO, which is a carbon reduction grant. The fund for that is 480,000. I'm not quite sure if we're going to go for that one just because I'm not sure that we've got a project recognized that it's least $100,000. But the, the things that could be used for our, you know, electric vehicle charging stations or traffic flow improvements. So we're going to be looking at that. The call for projects will be later this year. So we may have something lined up for that when the time comes, but we'll, I'll kind of get into why we may not. So the why we may not. We're looking for additional funding sources always, but we want to balance what we're doing with what we can do. So we can obviously track down these grant funds all day, but we have to be able to administer them. So there's a man-hour cost to applying for grants. It takes us a lot of time to, for one, identify applications that we do want to go for and then to spend the time filling out the applications and writing the grants. So we want to also ensure that we're eligible. We don't want to waste our time applying for something that we know we won't get. And then we want to be able to deliver high-quality projects to the town and meet the expectations set in the UDO and our planning objectives and things like that. That's all I have for you tonight. Surely wanted to give a quick overview of what we're doing on grants and, and why, why we care about them. But if you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to take them at this time.
Mallory, I would just say that I am very appreciative to you, Clay, Patrick, for pursuing these efforts. I know I've been pushing you guys from my side with regards to the MPO. You know, in the past, it's always been, well, we don't qualify and because we're a unique community, but I just think it's amazing that we're actually in consideration for this and it's good stuff. So thank you.
I think we've, thank you. I think we've positioned ourselves very well to be a, a community able to go after these and with our three P's on staff. And I think it's a really exciting time to be working for the engineering department for sure.
Thank you very much, Mallory.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move into the public portions comment of the evening. Anyone wishing to address town council may do so. Please state your name and address for the record. Be courteous and do not repeat what has already been said, and please keep your comments about the subject and not personal in nature. We did have a signup, a signup sheet that was outside and I believe we have one name on there. Rose Day Francois. That's you? Good to see you again. Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rose Day Francois. My address is 4130 601 US South, Southview on the highway. I just want to say hello to everyone. I'm still new and fresh. I'm just getting well acquainted. So as I see you guys come up here and state issues and talk about problems, I'm right here taking accountability and just looking and learning. So if you guys see me afterwards, I'm willing to take numbers, cards, and to do a follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was all that we had on the signup sheet. Is there anyone on Zoom that wished to speak this evening? During public comments? All right, we will move right along to our consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ian. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion has carried. Thank you. Move to the communications portion this evening, starting with our town manager's update.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Community. I have a horse voice tonight, not because I'm sick, but because I'm from Cleveland. So I was at the game yesterday. So you'll have to, you'll have to pardon me as I was screaming for about three hours and trying not to get beat up after the game. Short, short updates this evening. First and foremost, I wanted to recognize Mallory as our new Public Works Director. I know council has already gotten that announcement, but Mallory Hodgson's been here with the town four years now and recently was promoted to the position of Public Works Director, helping us fill out that leadership team. So we're very fortunate to have Mallory for the entire four years that, that she's been here and we look forward to the next 40 that she'll be here with us. Another addition to the, the leadership team is a longtime employee Cory Jones, who was promoted to Assistant Public Works Director as well. So that, that fills out the top end of our Public Works Department. However, it does create a vacancy that Mallory had left. So we'll be advertising for the town engineer position this week and that'll be the final director position that we need to fill. The, the other two positions that we filled because they were just having people out were, sorry Rodney was looking around. Did I mess something up? Okay. And the other two positions that we recently filled was Taisha coming back from her hiatus. So I'm happy to have Taisha and April both back in the house. So I have all my folks here, really excited to have everybody back on. So if you guys need any of those, those folks, just feel free to reach out to me or them. Let me know. Mallory had already covered that, that sewer grant, but I think she was kind of modest in the fact that a lot of hard work goes into these grants. We're extremely proud to be able to grab, you know, these awards and, and to really be recognized as a community, one that can deliver these projects. That goes into a lot of the decision-making when we apply for these grants or if we award this, can, can the town actually deliver this project on time, under budget? Because a lot of money gets turned back in on these grant funds because communities just can't, can't deliver on time or they can't meet the strict reporting requirements involved with project management and fiscal management. So that our engineering team's doing an excellent job and our other department heads and departments have also been out there. They just haven't, haven't gotten the quick results that engineering has, but we do anticipate parks and planning and, and our other fire and our other folks receiving these same grants. And we, we do hope to have more news as Mallory mentioned in her presentation by the end of the month, 21st, 22nd. Whenever Ron's group finally meets and finalizes, everything will know our status on grants, but we do feel very good about our transportation grants. And I didn't have anything else to report, but I'll take any, any questions if the board has any.
Thank you, Rob. Brian Lee for our finance update this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. James, I'll get that queued up. So this is the finance report as of August 31st, straight into the revenue and expense dashboard. As you can see here, revenues in the general fund, most heavily dependent on tax collections are showing in the red at about 7%. As I've said numerous times, this is as expected as most tax revenue comes in, in November, December time period. I do want to point out that we got about a $1.2 million deposit from the county last week. And that is a couple hundred thousand from last year's big initial deposit. So a good trend line for us there. As you know, last year we did really well on our tax collections at, at 102% of budget and we're on pace to have no problem with tax collections based on that first distribution from the county. So really happy about that. All the general government departments are, as far as expenditures are in the green, except for communications in yellow there, but no concerns across the general government departments. Moving on, the only department in the red right now is Parks and Recreation. We're also used to hearing that in the first couple of months of the year as July 4th and then the event season. All those expenses are recognized at the beginning of the year and then that will start to level off for the rest of the year. So no real concerns across any of our departments as far as operational expenditures go. And as you can see, salaries townwide are at about 10% as we sit two months into the year. And this is a look at our facilities, infrastructure projects that are single-year projects. Couple that I want to draw your attention to are the fire department land. That burn training for both of those properties is scheduled the first week of October, weather permitting. So we'll be able to cross those off finally and get that, get those lots returned to a safe state until we're ready to construct a facility there. The Lucas Court build out is another project that I know has a lot of attention. That's up to about 30% now. The survey has been completed there. And so we are just working with the homeowners to get them to sign off on all the easements and then that project can take the next step forward. The deputy office expansion at the bottom of the list, it has been moved to 100%. That building is fully open and operational. And in fact, we have the ribbon cutting tomorrow night at six o'clock. So hope to see you all there. The last one at the bottom of the list is Harrisburg Elementary School Road. That has been paved and in conjunction with the roundabout. And other than day one of the school year, I think it's working really well from my personal experience. So yeah, that's, that's been a good addition there. This is a look at our multi-year projects in design. There's really only one that I want to point out here, and that's the Millbrook Pump Station decommissioning. Construction bids were open for this last week and they'll be presented to you for consideration at the October meeting. The, the project came in right around our engineer's budget, a little bit over, but it's a project that we still plan to move forward with next month. All the other projects in design here are showing some standard progress that you would expect for projects in engineering or design. These are our multi-year projects under construction. Fire station number two, training grounds. Once again, we're just holding on this until we get the engineer drawings for those structures. So no progress there. And then the Sequoia Hills Waterline Loop, the construction started the first week of August and is progressing on schedule there. These are our equipment projects. So everything for the year has been started. Some progress has been made on, on everything here. The fire radios were on the consent agenda tonight and that is the fourth of five-year project there. All the other fire equipment, either quotes have been obtained or the specifications have been given to the vendors to provide us with quotes. So everything is on track for completion by the December 31st date that you see there next to a lot of the fire items. And then all the items for Parks and Rec and for water sewer, same status there. It's either been ordered or we have quotes and we're ready to get a lot of those things moved on as well. So, so everything's been, been moved and we hope to get all of these equipment type projects out of the way by the end of the calendar year. Vehicles is not going to be quite the same story as we've been hearing for at least the last year. The deputy vehicles, they did open up ordering for those and we've authorized those. So we hope that those get a little movement here soon. The fire vehicles have all actually been received. A lot of those were 21 and 22-year projects. Those had been received. We're waiting to finalize those with upfit items and then those will be placed into service. And then lastly, the ladder truck has reached about 75% completion in the manufacturing process with delivery expected in late November or early, early December. And you will see the financing for the fire truck at next month's meeting. And I've got a couple of pictures here that the fire department gave me from their recent visit. You can see the body making its way down the line before it's been painted in the top two pictures. Nice little plaque, I believe is on the inside of the driver's door. And then some of the body that's been painted with a lot of the equipment being added into it as well. So that's really coming along nicely and they had a a really good progress visit last time they were there recently. This is a look at our professional services projects. The salary study, the results and the recommendations from that study are being discussed on tonight's agenda with implementation hopefully by October 1st. The financial audit is well underway. We have prepared all the audit documentation in the financial statements and field work begins Monday, the 19th. So keep me in your thoughts next week if you would. And the last two here are what the water model update and the CIP engineering services. RFPs have been distributed for those and that is what Mallory was referring to as being funded with, with that grant is that water model update. Some other things going on in finances. As I mentioned, we've distributed that RFP for financing and have actually selected an institution as well. So we'll present that to you next month. We've just finished up one audit as we head into our financial audit and that was the workers' compensation audit. Everything went really well there and we're actually getting a refund of about $4,100 from last year's premium back. So we're very happy about that. I wanted to give you a couple stats related to utility billing. We're going to be, we're trying to get, working with the Sustainability Advisory Board to become more efficient, more sustainable with our utility billing. So I just want to give you a couple of quick stats on the number of customers we have in utility billing. So you can see that's gone from about 8,100 to 8,300 in the last year, an increase of about 200 customers. Paper bills, I'm really excited to see this has gone down from 5,900 to just under 5,700. So while we've added a couple of hundred customers, we've dropped back in the number that we're having to mail. And that percentage of the paper bill is down to 68%. Another efficiency as far as, as materials that we have to send out and, and just getting reliable payments is our bank auto draft program. And so we've added 110 customers to the auto draft program over the last year. And one thing we implemented was the free monthly drawing for your water bill if you participate in this. I think that's shown to impacted it a little bit. I'd like to see more of an increase there and we, we push every time we get, every time we can, anytime someone calls about their bill, we, we try to push an auto draft. It's good for the customer and it's good for the town, but we are seeing a little bit of growth in that as well. And then last update I have for you is the ARPA funding. As you know, we got just under 5.3 million of ARPA funds and we still have about four and a half million to appropriate. And the due date for that appropriation is December 31st of '24 for us to make those decisions. And as Mallory said earlier, we have an additional two years after that to spend those funds. And that is all I have tonight. I would welcome any questions.
Just had a question on that auto draft. I think last time we talked, you mentioned that people have to bring in their check or something and they have to mail a check to set it up like, but there's some systems online where, you know, you can kind of confirm that online. Have you looked into those?
Yeah, we've looked into it. Our current website can't handle that with the security, but I've, I've been talking to James about that and there's, I think we can find a way to accomplish that. So we can get rid of that barrier because I think that's the biggest barrier for people signing up is turning over a check. A lot of customers don't even have checks anymore. So, or they have starter checks. So yeah, if we can get around that, I think that would be our biggest, biggest benefit.
Any other questions for Brian?
And the sustainability committee's been concerned about getting a price on the back for each copy. I'm sure y'all are still looking into that because they're always mentioning that.
Yes.
About that when you, this mailing costs this much to produce.
Yes, when we mail a utility bill, given recent price increases, it's about, last I reported, it was, it was just under 70 cents. It's up to about 75, 77 cents for every time we mail out a bill. So anyone that can go e-bill, you know, you're helping your future water sewer rates when you do that.
Thank you very much, Brian. And first up this evening, we will have our law enforcement update with Captain Meesmer. Going back and forth, going back and forth.
Mayor, Council. I'll start off with our August numbers. In August, we had 3,893 law enforcement-related activities, 2,841 security checks, where of course we're checking your businesses, your homes, et cetera. 644 traffic stops with an average non-emergency response time of six minutes and 31 seconds. So let's get down to what everybody likes to hear. What's going on out in Harrisburg? Start off with the shooting we had on husband. I wish I could tell you that we have made an arrest on that. It's not from lack of trying. We are getting, last update, I had very little cooperation from the victims. There are some social issues there. There's also some, I believe, maybe some familiarity, but they have all but stopped helping us at all with the investigation. North Carolina very rarely allows a victimless prosecution. So that is going to be a problem for us unless they change their mind. Now, on a brighter note, last meeting, we spoke to you about BNEs of vehicles in Litchfield Village. We have been able to identify that suspect and make an arrest. We were also able to get three kilos of cocaine out of Brookdale, which was a vice hit. We've also added $32,000 worth of breaching tools to our vehicles. All the patrol cars will have those. Now I know people are going to say, why do we need breaching tools? If we have a mass shooting or some type of incident, if grandmother falls in the tub, you name it, we need to be able to get into your house with something more than our size 10 or 12 foot. So we made that investment, purchased all those tools to help us better get into homes legally and/or businesses if the need arises. And last but not least, the grocery store larcenies. We've had several and I think we will always have several. But the last ring that we mentioned last month, we were able to make an arrest on that and that person is now in our jail. Any questions?
What's your view of the roundabout towns?
First few days, Brian was right, was a little bit catastrophe, but I believe it was more of a lack of education given out to the public. They didn't understand the two driveways, et cetera. It has gotten to be a lot better because that first two days I was having to have around three deputies there just to get people into that roundabout and not block it. Now we don't have anybody. So I believe it's working well. I do get a lot of questions about the one on Roberta. Just remember that's in the city, not in Harrisburg. If anybody's listening that's thinking about calling me about that roundabout. Any other questions?
So the education of all the traffic, parents going into the school, when I went by there today, they're still not necessarily using that double lane to, to get in there. I mean, traffic, it's only lasting 15 minutes in the afternoon, which is great, really great. And I don't see it in the morning, but I'm still wondering about that. But I'm still wondering about that education on the, on the second lane.
I don't think a lot of.
The road too.
Yeah. I don't think a lot of that came from the school. I know the town has mentioned some, and of course we could probably mention more and I can talk to the SRO and see if the school's willing to put out more information than already have. I'll just have to check and see if that's a possibility.
I think the biggest pushback you're going to get on that is it seemed like when they were using that other lane, then the parents weren't letting them in.
Letting them in, yep.
Yeah. It was like, why are you jumping? So.
And the only way to correct that, I hate to say it to the school, is probably going to be for them to go back and have enough direct traffic, which is what they were hoping to get away from when they added that second lane.
And, and I've got a, I've got a suggestion on that. So I'll, I'll talk to you about it after, but I, I think they can rotate it at the school with the drop off people without getting, I don't think anything needs to be done at the roundabout. I think it's up, up at the school staggering those lanes and, and waving people. So.
Any other questions? Hopefully everybody will be at the opening tomorrow. Fireworks are at about nine 10, nine 30, 10. Lee City, I'll let me pop by.
Thanks, Captain Meesmer. Next up, we'll have Chief Dunn with our fire updates for the month.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Go Mountaineers, how about that? I'll be up there Saturday on game day. So if you see me on TV. So for the month of August, we responded to 198 incidents. Average response time was four minutes and 13 seconds. Station one continues to be the busiest, but station two is not far behind it. So they continue to become busier and that's typical in residential and then that's mostly what that station deals with. So some of the things that we participated in last month, the high school Bulls Fest, I'm sure Councilman Smith was probably at that. We did a wet down of the band as well, which is traditional for them to do, I think right before school starts. So we did that for them. I guess they like to have dirty tank water sprayed on, but they seem to enjoy that. And then of course, you all know from the manager's email, we were able to reduce our ISO rating from a four to a two, which goes into effect December the 1st. So very proud of that. We appreciate the support and it takes, it takes all departments. It takes engineering, it takes public works. It takes fire, it takes manager's office, it takes town council. So it's definitely a collaborative effort. We, we appreciate it. We should be proud of it. One of 88 departments in the state of North Carolina. So that's out of 1,500 and so, so that, that's a major accomplishment. So we appreciate it. Any questions? So quick, so for, for homeowners, it really won't have, have any effect, but for a commercial project or building, that, that should be a major factor that they look at.
That was going to be my question. As far as insurance rates and things like that, they'll see some reductions.
So homeowners, typical, single family homeowners won't see anything reduced from what it is today. Typically anything under a five is, is what is going to be in the state of North Carolina. So, but take the Pepsi Corporation, because they're a storage facility, they're going to see some savings, but Harrisburg Family House may see different savings because they're a restaurant with a, with a high hazard kitchen. So, so it'll vary depending on what, what the use is of, of the commercial building, but everyone should see some reduction. So. And we'll educate more as we get close to December 1st because they'll need to contact their insurance agents and make sure they're getting those savings.
Thank you, Chief Dunn.
All right. Thank you.
Just a couple of mayor's comments this evening. Just a reminder that this coming Saturday, September 17th is the fourth annual multicultural festival at Harrisburg Park. The event is from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And there will be food trucks. It's really a wonderful family cultural experience. I hope to see you all there. Sadly, the weather this past weekend did not quite cooperate for our Rockin' the Berg series. We are looking to reschedule that, but we do have our next one scheduled for October 8th. The art walk is also scheduled for that same day, October 8th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. as well as Bags in the Berg that is on October 15th. So lots of things coming up as we kick into fall. I did participate in the Centralina Board of Delegates meeting a few weeks ago and just a couple of updates. We did approve the Centralina's fiscal year 2325 strategic plan. And Centralina has also partnered with two consulting firms to expand their service offerings that I think will be beneficial for our town. They are now offering on-call code enforcement, planning and grant writing services. So that seems to be the, the hot highlight for this evening. The town manager and I have been guest speakers earlier this month at Rotary and to HBN. We were kind of giving a status update on Harrisburg and what our businesses can expect to see. It's really been a great way, I think, to engage our local community and business members. And later this month, we'll also be presenting to the Harrisburg Business Alliance. I believe that's September 22nd and that is open to the public as well. And that is all I have this evening. So we will open it up for council comments.
Madam Mayor, the Sustainability Advisory Board would like to remind the residents and the council that the Arbor Day tree giveaway is now up and running. I know Councilman Smith sent me a snapshot today. I think he said on Facebook, I looked on Twitter, it's there. I went out, it's funny what you have to do. So you go to the link and you diagram around your house and you tell what type of tree you want. It'll tell you how many trees you can get. It'll tell you where you suggest where you put your trees in your house, around your house, and it'll tell you how much money you'll save in a year. So I ordered two dogwood trees. So we'll see how that comes. I think they're in three gallon containers, but that should be on our social media. I did not find it on our town webpage, but maybe it's hidden, but I know it's on the Twitter account and Facebook.
Facebook.
Facebook. And then again, congrats on that money. I'm so excited about the possibility of Colwell Road Extension, being able to get started with some of that money. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dullinger. Okay. We will move on to, there are no public hearings this evening. You'll see that on your agenda. So we'll move into old business. And Zach is up for his marathon round of I think four presentations this evening. So this first one is to extend the terms of planning and zoning board members through October 31st. So we'll let you explain that, Zach.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Glad to be here for my four quarters. Seems like the Panthers didn't realize the game started until the fourth quarter yesterday. So Rob enjoyed that win. So the, the first item for your, your consideration is to extend the terms of two board members. Back in June, you extended the terms of Rodney Garner and Kevin Schaffner from July 1 to August 31 to allow for the appointment of two new members. The planning and zoning board did meet in August and formed a subcommittee. We're working on scheduling interviews right now, but still not been able to recommend individuals for that, fill those positions. And so before you tonight is a request to extend those terms through the end of October. Give a little bit more time for those interviews to take place and recommendations to come before you. And so that is, that is the recommendation. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those if, if you'd like.
So there's no questions, but as one of the liaisons, so here again, this is, we've been through this before and I hope with, look, these boards know what their roles are. They know when their terms are up. And for us to have to extend and extend again, and this is not the only year that we've had to do this. They need to be on, onboard and upfront and know when their terms expire and they're ready to implement the stuff. We had two meetings this year that we did not meet. They, they could have been busy working on this. So I just want to bring that to everyone's attention that they do have some ownership in the game and they should know that their terms are up and they should be upfront and ahead of the game, knowing and getting things situated.
Are there any other comments before we make a motion?
What are the repercussions if they don't get extended?
Well, it is an advisory board. They have no final decision-making. As you know, so it really is a matter of whether they would be able to have a quorum. And that would be a, a problem because by statute, there has to be an advisory opinion given by the board before a public hearing is held. So potentially it could delay a hearing, but the, you know, the biggest concern would be a, just a not having a forum. If, if they technically were not able to make it vote.
How many advocates?
So in addition to the two who are applying for an extension, the two existing, there are three others that are eligible. So a total of five for two positions.
Is there term limits?
There's not, not to my knowledge.
Yeah, our zoning advisory board currently has, does not have term limits. Term limits can be implemented by the town council. I mean, those, the requirements for a position are determined by the board. Also as far as timeliness on recommendations to the council, that is also something that is at the discretion of council. Ultimately, council selects these. So the council could at any time select one. So if the board is not getting timely recommendations to the council, they're in danger of not being able to recommend anybody in council selecting somebody as they see fit. So both of those things, I think, as we move forward, our, our areas will, will focus on, and even without term limits in ordinance, it can be a criteria that either the advisory board or council uses in selection. Some terms you may decide it is important to have experience remain. And some terms it may be important to diversify the thought on the board. So you know, that's something that term limits can kind of cut both ways. You can lose a lot of empirical and historical experience. But also if, if people are staying on and there's not enough turnover, you may not be getting a diversity of thought on the board. So I think in, in theory, term limits are good, but in practice, you'd have to be careful. It may be better to keep it as a criteria and not a, a hard and fast rule.
So for clarification, you said that's determined by each specific board, determinements?
No, that's, that's determined by the council. So the council can set the requirements for the planning and zoning board appointments.
I mean, I, I hate to say Linda Thurmond stepped away, but she was up against a, you know, term limit and you know, I guess that's where my confusion is, is why aren't all boards have the same rules?
They could be.
Thank you. Well, and yeah, if you look at planning and zoning, there have been people on there that have been on there 20 years, 14 years. And if you don't know the rules and you expect us to tell you, then I wonder what we really are accomplishing. And I think we do need to have these boards all lack alike. And I think in the past, people of, I know Councilman Patrick has applied for this place. This board I applied and they turned us down. But yet they continue to put the same people on there. So when I hear that, oh, nobody's applying, that's not necessarily true because maybe they know they don't have an opportunity. Because if they know somebody's going to be there 14 years or 20 years, they'd say, why bother? So I, I will approve this extension this time, but I hope as a board and as a staff and as a town council, we get better with this. Because there are five good candidates that I have reviewed the applications are five good candidates that we need to look at.
And I believe that's on our retreat. It's one of the goals that I think all of council had kind of earmarked to reevaluate the committees and boards as well.
How long was the advertisement posted?
How long was it posted? It was just when I got here. I know it was probably a month or so, maybe longer, but.
I think I did it twice.
Yeah, we, I, I will tell you that we had, we have interviews set up for next Wednesday. So that's a good thing. And my goal is to bring those recommendations to you for your October meeting so we can get this done quickly, not, no more delays.
I think from a historical perspective, the reason some of the members have been on there so long is that there haven't been that many people that have applied. We, in fact, we, I think we had what, five this time or something like that? That's probably a rec, record, which is good to have some new people that apply to be on that board. But since it is advisory, you know, and it does require some expertise and some time that you have to spend. And then, you know, there aren't, there haven't been that many people applied in the past. That's why the same people keep getting reappointed. And so because that's happened, I think people just don't pay attention to the end of their terms and say anything about it. It's just always been kind of automatic, but maybe that's changing and that, that's, I think that's good. Because you know, I've been representing them now for almost 30 years and Rodney's right. We've had the same people on there for a long time. It really hasn't changed that much over that period of time.
Thank you, Rich.
Just wanted to make a couple of points. This is probably an anecdotal, but last year we were campaigning, there was actually a couple of people that have mentioned to me, and one of them being a lady that we met while we were at the flowers farm. So there were several different subdivisions getting together. So I don't remember which subdivision she was from, but she said she was an engineer and she applied. And she actually didn't even hear back and they didn't say, you know, why they didn't accept her. And the other thing is, the other concern to me is the people that are on it that are so experienced seems that they're not doing a good job advertising or something. I would expect better from someone with that much experience to try to get other people involved in this as well.
Here, any other comments before we move to a motion? Is there a motion on the floor to extend the terms of planning board members Kevin Schaffner and Rodney Garner through October 31st as presented this evening?
Motion as a statement.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. That concludes our old business. So we will move right into new business and Zach will stay with us as we can sitter the preliminary plat for the Ely Meadows development. There is no action taken this evening that will be taken to the October 10th meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a preliminary plat. Probably was rezoned by the council June meeting to allow for 71 single family homes. And location Robinson Church Road, Peach Orchard Road, about 53 acres. Planning and zoning board did review this preliminary plat at their August 16th meeting and they recommended approval by the town council. Planning staff has reviewed the submitted plat against the conditions and, and the approved site plan and found it to be consistent as well as with the standards of the UVO for a preliminary plat. So we, we are comfortable with this plat moving forward. Just a refresher on the site. That's the Hawthorne subdivision to the south that you can see in, in the blue. This is the, the approved plan. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to jump that quick, but this is just a, the approved site plan, council approved. And on, on this next plat, just to reiterate and refresh everyone, there was a number of additions and changes made after the public hearing. Those in the golden color in particular were added. And so that is, there's one more, a good thing. And so we are, and obviously once preliminary plat follows, construction drawings will be generated and engineering will be looking at those very closely. But at this point, we're, we're very pleased with the, the plan's development. And just a refresher on, on the home elevations for the, for the development. I don't want to take the time to go through the conditions. There's 10 of these that are standard. There are two actually at the end that I'll just point out that were added. And they are going to be incorporated in the plan. One was to have the garages set back 30 feet from the public sidewalk. So we don't have the spill over cars hanging out the sidewalk. So you have to go out in the street to walk around, stay on the sidewalk. And then the restriction on number of resident, residential units that can be rentals at any given time. And then the restriction on uh, number resident residential units that can be uh, rentals at any given time. Uh, and those were added after the uh, the public hearing. And so our recommendation um, is for approval um, based on the uh, preliminary plat being consistent with the site plan. Approved by the council at their June thirteenth meeting. Um, there's any questions, I'm glad to answer, if not, um.
Are there any questions for Zach on this particular?
In terms of the. Yeah, that's, that's a good question, I would turn to Rich on that one, uh, see if there's any.
Yeah, it'd be seven on this total, they have seventy-one homes, seven, once seven of them are registered as as rentals, that eighth one could not. It would have to be owner occupied.
But but we, I mean, there's no mechanism for checking this.
It's a great point.
It's just on pa- on paper.
The theoretically, you could, you could file civil action, but yes, there's not a, there's not a quick enforcement mechanism.
Yes, that notification will come from H O A.
Generally, that is who, because this becomes an H O A condition or a covenant as well. And they generally self enforce that, but if you found out that it wasn't for some reason. Um, anybody could could take action against that, that restriction, but but yeah, it's not a. There's no quick, easy mechanism for enforcement.
So this is funny, y'all mentioned that because I had someone speak to me in the last several days, so here's what they brought up. They take a room out of their house and they have to file because they're using that room in their house for business purposes. They have to come to Harrisburg and they have to file a business permit. All right, because they're doing the right thing. But yet, these homes that are being bought and served as rental homes don't have to do that certain thing. When you actually look at it, that home is a business, it's a rental piece of property, is that a true statement or a false statement?
It's a statement I don't know the answer to, but I can, but I can get, but I can get you. But it would not be uncommon to require rental properties to have some type of license.
Um, there there are communities that have that for a rental registration, yeah, that's, that's common to have rental registration. But you'd have to have that uniform across the town, not just for one. And I think the person was probably saying when they look at how much trash has gone in and out of the house with the dumpsters and stuff like that. So I said, well, give me some examples, give me some pictures, you know, tell me something, right, but they were just throwing that out. So furthermore, we're moving to the next subject on this, so help me understand that this is not necessarily for this plat. And and I forget if we've asked this question before. So as we're going along and this plat has the landing pad on it for the cop car. It has a raised row part um, going back into the next neighborhood. But yet we didn't add those as true condition bullet points, but yeah, they're on the preliminary plat. So how do, how are we ensure that they will not get lost in the transfer of when this or this development is built? That they will never get by Mallory. Uh, again, the the plan that's approved is as enforceable as any bulleted item. And so that's basically the answer. Um, we're gonna acquire that and and we've got inspectors and uh, whether it's Tom in planning or. Um, Jason or anybody uh, in engineering, it's, it's a, it's a condition that'll. Monitor and enforced.
You know, I'd I'd clarify that too, just by saying you have the written conditions.
Yep.
Which are twelve, but the physical plat that that we have shows, you know, those, those geometric uh, improvements. Those are conditions as well, they're just denoted a different way. So what our engineering folks would do and our planning folks would look at the preliminary plat. In addition to all of our other regulations, when we develop construction documents, to make sure we're not missing anything. But that's why it's important that that preliminary plat come before a council is to make sure that it matches the rezoning. And uh, so that's a good question.
So did we see everything, because I thought there were a few more. So I see the 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 landing plat, I see the 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 road that goes into the ne- neighborhood next door. Then the two bullet points, was there anything else, counsel, do y'all remember anything else?
Well, the bike had, bike lanes had to be corrected.
The bike lanes had to be corrected.
As I previously was, on each side, they were redrawn.
Correct, this has the updated cross section.
Right, there was an updated cross section, that's part of that.
Thank you, Zach, and just a reminder that action will be taken at the October tenth meeting for that. Next up, we have consideration for the preliminary plat at the Bloom Corner. Again, no action will be taken at this meeting, that also will be happening at our October tenth meeting.
So um, if you recall last September, the um, Bloom Corner um, rezoning was was approved. Uh, it was a mixed use development, so there was uh, commercial buildings, there were townhomes. Um, and uh, that is going to be um, uh, a a project that will um, I think have a have a good inner uh, interaction between those uses. Um, properties within town limits, so it's no annexation required. The planning and zoning board again reviewed this plat at their uh, August sixteenth meeting and recommended approval by the town council. And as well, staff has reviewed it and we're comfortable that the preliminary preliminary plat reflects and is consistent with the intent of the conditional site. Plan for the rezoning, um, and also with the standards of the U D O for a preliminary plat. Um, location um, for uh, uh, for your uh. Uh, information, um, you can, you can see the uh, uh, it's all ready to roll. I don't know that there's much site work needed on that property, uh, probably need to uh, add some things in, which is the subject of the next uh, slide. Uh, so you can see the townhomes, you can see around the perimeter, uh, the commercial um, uh, buildings. And um, so that is um, the layout, this is illustrative elevations for the commercial. Um, and uh, just to give you a sense of that, we will, obviously, as we get to the construction uh, drawings, we'll have those. And and we'll uh, make sure that everything is is consistent with uh, the approval as well as the uh, the U D O standards. Uh, again, the the items that I've outlined in in red are those that are specific to this development. We always have some standard conditions, uh, but there were limitations on the type of uses, sizes. Um, uh, that would be uh, allowed, uh, no gas stations, convenience stores, automobile automobile related uses. Um, and so there's uh, there's those, uh, as well as uh, again, a ten percent limit on uh, townhome rentals. And so uh, those uh, make up the um, uh, and I'm sorry, there's two others, uh, landscaping. Um, and there was also a uh, a berm uh, existing that uh, is not to be disturbed. So those are the kind of things that, again, inspection uh, as well as plans, will uh, will make sure that uh, those are all compliant with. And again, the um, planning department uh, is recommending the approval of this and understanding that there's a a meeting to follow. Uh, but it does comply with the preliminary plat or with the rezoning approval in the U D O. And the previously approved conditional uh, zoning site plan. So if there are any questions, I will be glad to answer. Or if you'd like me to go back to the site plan or the images uh, that. And remind me, this one will follow the old U D O or the new U D O? It's a good question. Um, so this was approved September, uh, but it was submitted prior to. Um, right. But there were still conditions that I think would probably be fairly consistent with current U D O. Uh, Rob, you may have a, uh, or Lee may have a different uh, um, view on that, but um.
Yeah, and and uh, Zach put me on the spot to to check my memory on on passage and stuff. But I I believe, um, although this this could have gone under the previous U D O. I believe the applicant worked with the planning director at the time to make sure that this was up to all of the, all of the future standards. If I'm wrong on that, I think it would be very minor, but that is my understanding.
Thank you. The i- i- it appears from my view that this, if not in line with the new year, U D O essentially mirrored. What will be the requirements, you know, based on on the plan and layout, so.
Other than the size of retail, is there any other restrictions as far as what kind of retail stores and such can go in there?
Um, really, the the only exclusion um, you you see are really related to things like gas station, convenience store, auto related. So no oil changes, uh, no tire shops. Um, and then the um, the size uh, of the store um, has got to be uh, limited also. Which I think the the intention is to um, try to have some neighborhood uh, retail that is not uh, chain. Or um, franchise type and um, that um, I think with with those constraints on it. Uh, is is really the uh, the goal, but uh, uh, really, there's only certain uh, exclusions. You know, of of obviously size and then certain are just prohibited. But you know, the the variety store, I think, so uh, just to name names, uh, something not exactly. But that would simulate a store that has a monetary term, uh, in its name, uh, would not be allowed, so.
Uh, what about like, um, if like a CBD type store wants to come in and is there any restrictions against that?
Um.
Smoke shops.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there was a.
Yeah, other otherwise, I I'd have to uh, look more closely at the uh, the ordinance. But uh, the exclusions um, that are specifically um, uh, that would be excluded are those on the conditions. Um, and um, uh, you know, there is a list, obviously, under zoning that is very long. And so they pulled out uh, the uses that would not be allowed. Um, and so other than that, they would be permitted, uh, but I don't know per se whether there's a uh, exclusion for a CBD. Or smoke shop or uh, something along those lines. And 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 this may be a, you know. Inside baseball or a clarification that nobody asked to make. But uh, when the rezoning was approved, there was a lot of conversation to that. And the applicants did work with the town, so I'm I'm, I'm fairly confident, even though I'm not the planning director. So I don't want to uh, discuss on on the specifics of planning, but there was a lot of thought that went into that part of it. So my my understanding that, you know, those kind of transient, small CBD, checking the cash, cash for gold. That that stuff was all, you know, thrown out as as things. And uh, Mohammed was was worked really well with the the town to try to prohibit that in the conditions. That being said, I know Zach's pointing out the conditions, we've already approved that. Um, if these conditions on the plat match the conditions of rezoning, the board is required to approve it. So um, I just wanted to make that clarification, nobody asked for it. Um, I just, just wanted to point that out, but with that being said, um, yeah, Mohammed and his team um, came with a pretty high quality. Um, approach to make sure that those those types of things wouldn't be a concern.
Any other questions or comments on this particular item? So again, that will be discussed at our October tenth meeting. Next up, Zach, again, we have consideration of policy for decision making and planning and zoning matters.
Well, I have Rich to my right, and so I feel uh, that I have all the support I need on this one. So under um, the uh, North Carolina general statutes and also the Harrisburg U D O. Town council is vested with making what's known as legislative decisions, which is what we're uh, essentially talking about. Things like zoning map adoption and amendments, conditional rezoning, preliminary plats, annexations, U D O adoption. Uh, land use plan updates and amendments, so all of those uh, would be um, would fall under those uh, that category. Um, I'm sorry, let me back up. So currently, the the process is a two-step process. Uh, there's a public hearing uh, at which there's uh, discussion, consideration. But a final decision on all of those legislative matters is taken at a second meeting, usually the next meeting at the following council meeting. Um, what is being proposed is that you would hold a public hearing. Um, and at that same meeting, you would approve preliminary plats, U D O text amendments, which are editorial in nature. In other words, they're non-substantive, um, hal- halip or Harrisburg area land use plan text amendments, which are editorial. Uh, and then annexations without rezonings, which would be simply a one lot, uh, which you saw, uh, several of those recently. A final decision, um, a second meeting would still be required for zoning map, adoption and amendments. Conditional rezonings, annexations with rezonings, U D O adoption and text amendments. And then halip adoption and text amendments, and that would include also small area plans or any other sort of special uh, area plan. Um, so it really is trying to um, make a little bit more efficient the process. Uh, for those things that would normally come before you um, for legislative meeting, uh, but not to require two meetings. And as we get busier, uh, as uh, as we continue to be, um, I think that will be uh, will be helpful. Uh, this is just a quick chart to show, uh, which would be a one meeting, which would be a two meeting decision. Um, and again, preliminary plats are probably the one that would stand out the most. But um, you know, as as Rob pointed out earlier, uh, if a preliminary plat goes through uh, preparation. Uh, it's reviewed by the uh, planning and zoning board, it's reviewed by staff, um, and we find this to be consistent. We feel comfortable that if it goes to you, uh, and and you look at it and nod also, that we've got three nods. Uh, and that's enough for us to move forward. And again, as we we talked about tonight, the construction plans have got to be tied to the preliminary plats. And so we're always looking back at the previous approval, uh, and so we feel comfortable uh, with that process. Um, annexations without rezoning, uh, that would be a one parcel situation, someone wants to come into the town. Usually it's to get water or sewer service, um, and so that would be something. And then a U D O uh, text amendment or land use plan text amendment. Um, just as an example, I have gone through um, the U D O uh, in my spare time, it is not reading material. Um, and I've gone through it uh, and and still looking through it, uh, but I've noticed that there are some editorial errors. Uh, there's some things wrong with it, uh, references to old parts of the old code, uh, the wrong definition, reference link. Uh, those are things that really wouldn't need to have necessarily a second meeting. Um, so those are the kind of things that we're trying to make a little bit more um, uh, at staff level and to review that a little bit more efficiently. And so, in the end, what we're really asking for is the green light for those four items for one meeting, that's the recommendation. And then the blue light uh, for the balance of the uh, decisions that you see there. And then also, um, that the council really reserved the right to make a final decision on any matter. At one meeting after a public hearing, if it feels that it's in the public interest to do so. And there could be a lot of reasons why, it could be, um, you know, Mallory's got the money ready to go, we need, we want to get going, it might be that. It might be a health and safety issue, it could be anything. Um, and then if the council were to, were inclined to do that, uh, they would do so by a vote of unanimous consent. And so always have that option uh, to move something even to a one meeting. Uh, or if it's a two meeting, you always have the option to delay it to a third meeting or fourth meeting. So that's always in in your discretion to do so, always in your in your purview. Um, so that really uh, is uh, is the uh, the presentation. I'm glad to answer any questions, Rich is here, uh, Rob is here, his voice is is working now, so we can call on him. Um, but any any clarification, glad to go over. But any any clarification, glad to go over in particular.
My my only question is, excuse me. With this change, is it immediate as far as across the board? Or is it those that are currently in flight, this does not apply to, how does that work?
I think that would be. We'd intend, because the the changes here are relatively small, the only things that we really have are preliminary plats that would maybe a rezoning was was already approved, and now we're waiting for a preliminary plat. We would intend to begin this at whenever the next preliminary plat comes before you. And and the reason, and I think when you look at those, that little grouping, these are things that are administrative in nature and that we don't have as a board, a lot of subjectivity to apply to it. So you're not going to learn any new information in a preliminary plat. You're going to learn, does this meet what we already approved? If so, we can move forward. If no, we don't move forward. And if there's a question, then we defer and we go to a second meeting. And right now, what we do is we just automatically defer to a second meeting. So I think this gives us a, you know, a couple of a couple of avenues when we look at schedules coming up. We don't have to have everything on the same agenda by having this rigid two-meeting schedule. It helps us beat up or beat up, speed up our business processes. So right, helps us speed up our business processes to get things through quicker that don't have a lot of analytics tied to them, which is another, you know, task that we've that we've been given and in the feedback that we get from the private sector. So, you know, most, not most, all of the things that that we look at here give the the council more flexibility rather than less.
This would apply to.
Whatever, yeah, anything that's in the middle of the process would go to this coming the next meeting.
Zach, I had one other question that came to mind, and it seems to talk. You mentioned there were some items that you discovered within the U D O that could be cleaned up. I I know through talking to some of the council, there were some things that may have gotten changed or or interpreted differently than what's written. So I would anticipate we may have some changes that we want to put in. Do your changes require us? I suspect our changes may require.
Yeah, no, I I think that's a great point. Again, if there's this flat-out editorial errors, it's referring to Article Five, which is from the old ordinance, that's not a good thing. But, you know, and and I've had discussions, I think, with with Rodney and Ian about this. I think after a year of test driving, there's probably other things that you may want to look at. So I would say that probably there might be a broader look at the whole ordinance to see how's it working after a year? Are there things that we want to change, are there things we want to add, things that we want to amend? But, you know, that would all be, so for example, on editorial change, that's something that, you know, I'm going to run by Rich, obviously, to get his confirmation that, yeah, this is editorial. This is not substantive, it's not a legislative decision. It's correcting, you know, the article that should be, you know, section one forty-two point one rather than Article Five, which is the old U D O. So, yeah, I think we would work however.
And the only difference would be those would still come to council for a change, even if we said, hey, this referenced page five, but it's really page six, you still have to approve that. The only difference would be you'd approve it in one meeting instead of two. And and if if the planning board brought an editorial change that the board thought, eh, I think this is substantive, I think this is close, then the board could say, let's defer this, let's get public comment and and wait for it. So, you know, editorial changes being, you know, figures that are mislabeled, misspellings, you know, misreferences, things like that. And those would just be done at one meeting. If we were going to make a substantive change, I think Councilman Patrick's pointed out a few substantive changes that we'd like to look at as a board. If you're looking at changing the percentage of a certain siding material, or if you're looking at changing setbacks or something, those are substantive. Those would require a public hearing, public input and a decision after that. Keep in mind, we allocated funding to bring back that same consultant to make some of these substantive changes that we're talking about. So it's there.
Is there a timeline on that?
Yeah, I I think he and I talked, I think we're just going to try to do as fast as we can.
I think I just looked at Brian and he said. Yeah, I mean, a- again, looking at it, there clearly are some things that need to be fixed. And then you 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 go through a year, you apply it to projects and you see, you know what, this could be a little bit clearer, we should put this here, there are some things that, you know, we want to make better. And we can, you know, we can recommend those, we can have a a group and and get together and talk about it and see what you want to do.
Thank you. So in our packet, you had put preliminary plats under immediate, but then we put major preliminary plats, preliminary plats that were for major developments, that it still went the two-month process, but we're changing that, that all preliminary plats.
Right, no, thank you for for pointing out that. So, yeah, in in your staff report, it did say major. The only preliminary plat that you see is for major. So if it's minor, that's done at the at the planning stage, you don't even see that. And so it should it just be for major associated with a rezoning. So if there's no rezoning, someone comes in with a, it's a buy right zoning, and they're putting the other preliminary plat, we would review it in planning, verify it, and then go through the process. So it would only be for major.
And so, I mean, ten ten houses in the neighborhood is going to be considered major.
If if there's a, yeah, it's a definition that we're going to bring it before you.
I forget what that definition is, but it's something like that. It's like five or more is a is a major subdivision that comes to you guys.
So, looking at the very last statement, staff also recommends town council reserve the right to make a final decision, et cetera, et cetera, by a council vote of unanimous consent. So we're saying that if we decide on a zoning map or conditional rezoning or whatever, that if we want to vote on it that night and not take it to the second month, we have to have a unanimous vote to do that.
Yeah, and and I'll let Rob weigh in on this. This was really, you know, something that that it's a conservative approach. Basically, you know, as Rob said, you have maximum flexibility. These are legislative decisions, you can make the decision at one meeting, two meetings, three meetings, four meetings, four meetings. So this was really, I think, a recommendation, if you want to go with a majority decision. But I think that the point is that for for specifically for a conditional rezoning, it was a major rezoning. If everything just lined up perfectly and there was some compelling reason to do it, then by all means, you 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 would be able to, you could do it now. The practice has been two meetings. But you can always, you have that ability to make it in one meeting or two meetings. But this is just a suggestion that if you wanted to do that, and it was a good reason for it, and it was in the at least accepted group of two meetings, we said, you know what, there's a good reason, let's do it one meeting. That's just it.
So the last question as it relates to that is, if that situation comes up, are we going to get two separate recommendations? One that we approve it tonight, and then one that we approve it? Or is it, we're going to approve it tonight and are we going to approve it?
I I would anticipate that only happening in the rarest of circumstances. For instance, let's say you have an economic development project that you're competing with, that may be a multi-state or or regional employer. They, you may have a compelling reason in in that regard to say, we we need to, we need to speed this up to to this month, and you would know in advance and staff would be making a recommendation to do that. But keep in mind, all of what's on here is policy. This is, you know, a best practice, so to speak, of of what the staff is saying is a good policy for the council to have so that you understand ahead of time when you get agendas, what the process should be. You are only bound by the law. And that's where Rich, you know, comes in on it and says, you you can, you can vary any of your policies. You're really only bound by the law.
Well, that's that's right, that's what I was going to say is that, really, if you look at it from this point of view, you've got a point, if you, you know, decide to do this, that that Zach is suggesting, that you will have adopted a pow- policy on that at that point. So then, what what he's saying is that if you decide because of circumstances on a particular application that you want to vary your policy, then you you're saying that everyone has to agree that we're varying it on this particular one. That's why it would be unanimous. So if if everyone agrees on it, that we're going to just change the policy for this one, for this one project, for this one meeting, then, you know, it 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 kind of makes sense that, you know, and then you go back to just the regular policy on the next application.
Any other questions or comments?
This seems to make sense to me. I mean, the stuff that we want the public input on basically takes two meetings so that we can get it after it's been presented to the public, get feedback, have them change it and come back for the next one for review. The stuff like preliminary plat where we basically have to say yes, makes no sense to have two meetings, because while we do want high-quality projects where the public has input, there's no reason, in my opinion, we take so long for basic administrative tasks. Because then then maybe people don't want to come build their commercial building, because we take six months to get it through. So I'm I'm in support of it as it is.
Do we have public comment or?
Yeah, we do have to make a motion. Motion to approve the changes to the town council policy to allow certain final legislative decisions on planning and zoning matters to be made at the same meeting where a public hearing is held as recommended by staff. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion is noted.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has carried. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Next up, we will have Jim Spina, our Parks and Recreation Director, consideration of acceptance of the H C Y contribution for Parks and Recreational Capital Outlay Authorization as related to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget ordinance and amendment for a grant received from Cabarrus County.
Welcome to. Good evening, Mayor, Council. There we go, that's a little better. Here tonight to talk about a grant that Parks and Rec has has recently received, matching incentive grant from the Cabarrus County. And tonight, I'm going to introduce you, most of you know her, but not everybody does. This is Erin Kegley Paris, and she is Recreation Coordinator, along with her partner, Mike Kirby. They recommended this project and she wrote the grant. So I'm going to turn it over to her so she can talk to you and she has mostly information. So Erin, go.
Good evening, everybody. So we are doing the matching incentive grant that is put on and offered by Cabarrus County Active Living and Parks Department. The purpose of this grant is to encourage nonprofits to enhance your communities. So this matching incentive grant, we matches up fifty percent of your total project. So what we asked for was a double-sided batting cage at Stallings Park. So it would be a concrete slab with turf on it, and then, of course, there'd be a net down the middle so that either two teams can practice or you can rotate more kids through. So like I said, it's going to be at Stallings Park. The blocks are kind of the tentative locations of what we think we want to have it, but those are not permanent. So again, that's something that we'll talk about where we want to have our location. So who is this going to go through? It's through our five oh one C three, the Harrisburg Community and Youth Association. So H C Y will be funding fifty percent of the project. So the total project was nineteen thousand two hundred fifty. So of course, Cabarrus County Active Living, their their half is going to be nine thousand six hundred twenty-five, and we provide or H C Y will provide the other half. So this letter right here is the reward letter from Londa, who is the Director of the Act Living and Active Living and Parks Department. As they, when I presented to the commission, they took it to the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners and they approved it. And then why we wanted to do this project and why this was important to us is because right now, we feel like that would utilize more practice space for our youth athletics. As we all know, our youth athletics have grown tremendously within the past year and a half. And I, we're, you know, tight on space. So what this does is, right now, Stallings Park is only utilized by our five-six baseball program because they don't need batting cages. But this provides the opportunity to open it up, practice space for older kids, where that is where our numbers are growing in our older, which is a good thing. But we just need more space. So this provides the opportunity to add more practice times for older age groups so that they're not just stuck on one field. So that's kind of the big importance and why we wanted to do this project, just because, again, the biggest thing is our athletic programs are growing. So that's what we wanted to get for the matching incentive grant that we were rewarded. In October twenty twenty-two is our next session for the matching incentive grant. And what ideas that we've had are shade structure at Harrisburg Park, where the concrete slab is, because there is no shade down at Harrisburg Park. So of course, we know July fourth can get really hot. But have a shade structure between or behind the concession stand between fields two and three, or maybe an exercise station at Harrisburg Park as well. And any questions?
What about bathrooms into the Holcomb Woods Fields? Like, is that something that can be applied for?
I I think I'll take that one. So that that item is in our C I P four twenty-four, I believe, Brian, right? And we have a couple other grant opportunities we're looking at. I'm not sure it will cover bathrooms in a facility. We're looking at one potentially this fall for playground structure. Fire Mill does need an update there, Fire Mill Park. So there are a couple looking, but yeah, we will have our eyes open for something that might float our way. But right now, most of the grants that are being flown our way are more active programming, more active equipment.
Yeah, thank you. And that shade at Harrisburg, that's wonderful, I hear so much about it.
I also want to speak to that real quick, too. One thing we have to remember on that is with this, we would also have to maintain or watch our funds in H C Y A. So that's something we would get with Brian and see what was available for the second round of the grant. So we haven't really gotten that far with it, but that's that's our next question that we'll have answered.
Any other questions for Erin?
So the action is twofold, to accept their grant and then.
Yeah, it's just, it's just one, it's just one motion for the capital outlay not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
You can make it more motion.
Yeah. Budget ordinance to be funded with the grant received.
Just Erin, thanks for your creative ideas and looking for that. Any funds are appreciated, so thank you.
So I'll read the motion.
I think you can read it, he was.
Okay, yeah, the the motion on the floor is to approve Parks and Recreation Capital Outlay not to exceed ten thousand dollars and the related fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget ordinance amendment to be funded with a grant received by the H C Y A from Cabarrus County. That is the motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Sorry, Jim stole your spotlight.
Let's see, next up, we will have Brian back, and he will be presenting the amendment to the lease agreement between the town of Harrisburg and the Cannon Memorial Row in Cabarrus Y M C A.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome back.
Evening again. Got a couple of short slides here for our lease agreement. All right, quick history on the lease agreement with the Y M C A. The Cannon Memorial Y M C A has leased the second floor of Town Hall for a five-year lease, and that ran from October first, twenty seventeen through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The monthly rent for that is eighteen thousand, which comes out to two hundred and sixteen thousand annually. And that lease had an automatic month. And that lease had an automatic month to month extension with 30 days notice of intent to terminate by either party. And we are now reaching the end of that five year lease. And the YMCA has expressed to us that they intend to lease the space for an additional two years to provide them time to construct their standalone facility in Harrisburg Park. So that's a relationship that benefits both us and the YMCA. And allowing them to continue to lease upstairs while they construct that facility is a win win for both parties. So the lease extension agreement would have all the same terms of the lease that we have right now. With the first year of October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2023, at 18,500 per month or 222,000 annually. The second year would be at 19,000 a month or 228,000 annually. And then we have an option to extend the lease on a month to month basis at the end of the two years. However, this time, both parties have to provide consent 90 days prior to the expiration of the lease to extend on a month to month basis. And those months, each individual month at the end of the two years would be at a rate of 19,500 per month. So I couldn't help but convert these numbers into fiscal year for you. Because that's how I think. So for fiscal year 23 to finish out this year, that's two, just over $220,000 for fiscal 24, we're at just over 226. And then guaranteed in this lease would be 57,000 into fiscal year 25 with the option to extend at 19,500 per month after that. So our suggested motion tonight is to approve that two year lease agreement for the second floor of Town Hall with the Cannon Memorial YMCA as presented. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Brian, how much time do we have left on our purchase of this building for many years?
This building, I think we've got about four years left on the debt for that. However, when we go to do a construction project on this building, we will have to refinance that at that time.
Four years, which would be roughly how much? We don't still.
The debt service that we owe on that is 1.3 million right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So when I looked at this, something ran through my mind, but it's just a comment. We will be giving our portion to the YMCA is 400,000?
Four million.
Four million, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, another zero, right? And we're still planning to do that in at one month sum or?
We haven't really determined the method that we're going to do that. But, but we do know that we need some benchmarks along their construction project before we'll outlay those funds. We know it'll help the YMCA considerably to front load that money as much as we can. But we just want to see construction progress before doing so.
So is this saying that they're hoping to be in the new facility in two years?
That is the hope. That's the, the construction timeline that we've seen is within two years.
Brett shook his head at two points when you mentioned four million upfront. And then he would have a new facility within two years. So I think those are, those are the goals for the Y. Right now, now clearly as a board, we need to discuss, you know, how we fund that. We've committed it over a period of time right now, but there are some, some options. I don't necessarily, as Brian mentioned, having it completely upfront is, is isn't how, even if we committed to saying we'll give it upfront, there would still be benchmarks when they would take draws on that because you would want to see, you know, land acquisition and then clearing and then vertical construction and, and benchmarks hit. But we're working that out with the Y through a separate MOU agreement at this time.
So is there a reason the lease went up other than just normal cost?
Yeah, just, just, just normal escalators that you, that you typically see in leases. And we hadn't had anything for the five year period. So so it was necessary to get that. The only thing we couldn't get in there was a fee for every time a weight is dropped.
Are there any other questions for Brian on this? There is a motion to approve the two year lease agreement for the second floor of Town Hall. Yes. Yes.
Make one clarification.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, sorry.
So we will remove Cannon. Thanks, Brett. So yes, there is a motion to approve the two year lease agreement for the second floor Town Hall with the Rowan Cabarrus YMCA. Is there a motion on the floor?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion has carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a personnel matter to discuss in closed session this evening. For salary and staff, it, it will probably last about half an hour to 45 minutes, I guess, we, we hope. The only thing after that closed session will be the approval of the pay study. There are no more public comments, but you are free to stay. You will just have to wait outside of the room until we come back out of closed session and we can call you back in at that time. Is there a motion to move into closed session? All second, all in favor? Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Motion has carried. Quick, quick break during rest. That's all right. That's all right. Thanks, Brett.
I forgot you were on the night.
Business. And that is consideration of the new staff salary ranges, related salary adjustments for the fiscal 2023 budget ordinance amendments. And I'm going to turn that over to Lee for his presentation. It's been quiet over there this evening.
I know. I must've gotten in trouble because I don't ever get to talk anymore. Okay, so this will be a presentation that me and Rob will tag team as we go through, but shorter than what we had before. So try to get through it pretty quickly. Basically wanted to get into as a reminder for those that may not know, the last full salary study was completed in 2016. This included all employees and they were adjusted to market within the new ranges at that time. In 2019, we had an intermediate salary update where our internal staff did an internal study and we adjusted employees for compression. And now we're at a new salary study that was approved by council in 2022. And that study was done by JER HR Group. They were hired, hired as our consultant to take us through that. So some of the key scope items that we had in this study was to conduct a comprehensive pay study to determine if town salaries are competitive and appropriate within the current job market, recommend a pay increase system and identify potential pay compression issues, recommend wage adjustments to salary plans, review the accuracy of current position titles and descriptions, and then recommend changes to the plan, strategies, policies and best practices relating to our compensation structure. So as we went into this, the first thing that we did, the consultant did, and this is something new that we had never done before, and it was a job valuing system. And this is where staff provided job descriptions to the consultant for all of our positions. They in turn took all of those job descriptions and over the course of 15 different factors that ranged in a variety of things as far as oversight, responsibility for money, physical labor, all kinds of different things within those 15 factors. They graded all hundred and seven or so of our job positions. And that ultimately was able to take an actual value and organize all of our job positions in order of where they fell in that job valuing system. Then the other piece that the consultant did for us was actually, we're able to get market data for us to be able to compare each of our positions to all these municipalities that you see here. So we were compared against Concord, Kannapolis, Huntersville, Lexington, Monroe, Mount Holly, Statesville, Mooresville and Charlotte. So actual salary amounts were collected and then we took some averages. We removed the high and the low to try to get a more accurate determination there in, in the middle of those to really get a good idea of where the salary ranges should fit in based on the market conditions that this saw. So the consultant in turn took the market rates and the job values and they put those together and they established pay ranges for each system. As staff, one of the things that we did is we followed back up and did the same exercise ourselves and came to very similar results. So we felt very comfortable that what the consultant was providing us was good information. And what that ultimately said was that they determined our current ranges were 9.67% behind market. And that's not talking specifically about individual employees, but the job range of each individual position as a whole were 9.67% behind market. Obviously, there were some positions that were more competitive that were larger than 9.67 and there were some positions that were already set pretty close to market. And so those might've been less than that, but that's the average. And so that was the average back in the spring. One of the things that we wanted to do is we didn't want the study to be stale before we even got it before council for consideration. So as many of you know, the inflation continues to be at a high rate. The, the cost of living is, is high. So what the consultant did was they added 7% onto those numbers that were 9.67% behind market. Ultimately, to push us forward to where those salary ranges were as of June 30th, 2023, which is the end of our fiscal year. So that way we have comfort that one, we're getting our employees to those market numbers through the end of this fiscal year. But the other thing is that as we're hiring people throughout the fiscal year, we're bringing them in at a good market number, solid way through June 30th. And with that, I'll turn it over to Rob.
Thank you, Lee. And Lee did an excellent job of explaining kind of how, how we got from the original, you know, day one with the consultant, the scope of services up through the consultant recommendation. And what I'll go through here is kind of the, you know, the detailed or the more exciting part when, when I got involved, because all the hard work went, went into Taisha and Lee and, and the consultant putting together the, the base data. So ultimately, the consultant came back and, and recommended an implementation plan. But when we looked at those salary adjustments, what we really saw were, in addition to the, to the data that they had submitted, we had certain management goals that we need to accomplish with a pay study. And, and this, the recommendation that the consultant originally came with didn't address certain management goals and it was over the budgeted amount. So it wasn't going to be something that was affordable for the town of Harrisburg. And we would have had to step it in over multiple years, which would, in effect, you know, ruin the, the salary study point of getting us to market in today's numbers. What it didn't address was the existing structural pay issues. So the town of Harrisburg has grown so quickly over the years that we've added plenty of jobs that were brought in at market. Right? New jobs that were only created in the last couple of years. We took a look at the market and we brought those in at, at competitive ranges and at competitive salaries. However, jobs that may have stayed stagnant, that had poor definitions 10 years ago, those may have lagged behind. Positions that we had within the organization that were already above market, the study didn't take into account. Also was not fiscally constrained. There was no financial viability of the consultant recommendation. And it also did not, wasn't able to take into account employee consistency and fairness. That is information that a consultant would have access to. A lot of our compression issues or cross departmental comparisons of supervisors that do similar work. And what we ended up doing was going through a position by position analysis to make sure that we could meet those goals in addition to the consultant recommendation and data points that they gave us. So Lee and I sat down and literally reviewed every position. We were able to go top to bottom, town manager to entry level employee and review every position and get every position to a pay that is either over or within a few percentage points of market. And what we're recommending tonight is to actually set each individual range at the market range and then to adjust each individual position up to market and to give us a cushion of one or 2% over market at every position throughout the organization. And that's something that we're really proud of. That creates a base comp plan for us that's sustainable and fair. So every employee that we have here will be, again, at a market rate comparable to their years of experience with every other organization that we have in the region. And it creates a plan that's realistic and we can implement immediately. One thing we wanted to avoid was a drawn out compensation plan. We want to be able to implement it now within the next 30 to 60 days. And this plan is, meets all of those goals that we had. So when we went through our analysis, what did that process look like? So we were able to go through each position and compare the market rate of that position with the consultant recommendation was, with the comparison ratio, which is what comp ratio is short for, and the revised comparison ratio. So with, with that data in hand, we were able to go through and say, okay, we want everybody to get up to that comparable ratio, which is by definition in that range. If you're a two year employee, you should be in the two year range. If you're a 10 year employee, your salary should be at the 10 year range. That way we could look at the breadth of, of experience that we have for an employee and pay them commensurate with their experience. If that anomaly, if anomaly came up to where comp ratio was not met, we're able to compare the other four and, and look at a comparison. So if somebody was over market, our analysis usually stopped right there. If they were not over market, then we would go to the comp ratio, so on and so forth as we went through. The revised comp ratio also took into account some of our long term employees who have built up experience in other roles before they got into the role that they're in. So think a supervisor in the fire department probably started as a fireman, then moved on to a fire too, and then an engineer, and then a captain, and then a battalion chief. And if they were one year in battalion chief, they necessarily wouldn't be a one year employee. They may have 10 years of total experience that we're able to compare and compare that to market and make sure that every position is is compensated appropriately. Then we went through with, after we'd gone through each employee, we actually went through and, and looked at departments from a competitive or from a compression and fairness ratio and consistency ratios. So we're able to sit down with our department heads, share this information of their departments with them and ask them to identify any anomalies that they see in their department. Maybe there was something the consultant missed, maybe there was something management missed. So it was our third check we went through with our department heads for them to, to look at that as well. If we did find some one off anomaly, we made adjustments for that as well. We investigated the cause and came up with a tailored solution for that specific anomaly. And then ultimately looked at the total at the end and said, is this viable? Is this something the town can afford? Really excited about my presentation. I like this. I never had such a raucous crowd. Anyway, we went through at the end of this and said, okay, from a financial viability standpoint, we need to be able to implement this. It needs to be realistic. It needs to meet the town's current financial budget and make sure that it's something that we had already prepared for in this year's budget and, and we were able to accomplish them. So what are the result looks like, looks like is a comprehensive, systematic, top to bottom approach that includes every employee of the town. It's inclusive. We included the consultant. We included the management. We included department heads and we included council and small group meetings. Data driven process. We really tried to take the emotion out of the process and look at the 10 comparable community. and look at the 10 comparable communities and private sector data and use a blended approach. We have a job valuing component that looked at all of our job descriptions and, and said, you know, what is this? What is this job actually doing? And we're able to create market competitiveness. I believe after we implement this pay study, that every position in town has a range that is competitive where we can retain and attract the talent that we have and the talent that we want to have. It addressed the department and town-wide compression and fairness issues so that we now have a pay plan that is related to each individual position, top to bottom. Fixes all of our current structural issues where we do have, you know, newly created positions and some older positions so that those are all worked out. And most importantly to me, this plan is sustainable long-term and can be managed effectively. Because we're setting a good baseline now, we're able to go through the budget process in a deliberative way each year and make consistent adjustments across the board because we're setting a good base foundation now. Also, the plan is, is fiscally conservative and affordable. The consultant recommendation would have been much higher. It would have ended up with some of our underpaid employees remaining underpaid and some of our employees that are over market being even further over market. So by making those strategic adjustments, we made it affordable. We put it with inside the budget and it actually saves us money over the fiscally constrained model. So here's the cutout of the resolution that you have before you seeing the actual financial impact to the town broken down by department. You can see these adjustments, you know, range in the six to 10 range by total salary for the department with a total adjustment of $390,818 on the total town budget for the year. The recommended motion, if approved tonight, is a motion to approve the attached salary ranges and salary adjustment for all employees in the merit-based performance system and the associated fiscal 2023 budget ordinance amendments. I'll take any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you, Rob. Counsel, are there any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second, this motion on the floor to approve in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you, counsel. And I, I, I do want to stress how, you know, thankful that management is to be able to provide the salary adjustment to staff. I know it's a long time coming. Our staff has asked for and, and continued to ask for us to do a, a pay study. And I think the recommendation tonight by council and the approval by council is a very generous adjustment in our, in our pay study. And it's something that helps us win as a management team to be able to keep and attract our talent. But also I think it shows the appreciation to the staff that we have here, how much we do appreciate them and, and how good they truly are. So thank you for that.
And Rob, I said it in budget and I'll say it again tonight with regards to other opportunities for the employees. I still am very interested to see, and I know from this study that we will hear more with regards to potential other benefits that we can offer, that we do not offer or enhancements. And I know money is one thing, but it doesn't solve every issue. So any enhancements to benefits that we can discuss future, appreciate.
And thank you to the town and staff that was an active part. I'm looking right at you and helping to get this put out. You guys really went far above and beyond what the salary study provided. So being able to kind of drill down, I think, has made this very sustainable for our town. So very appreciative of that.
Yeah, Rob and Taisha and everyone that was involved, I really want to appreciate. I express my appreciation of the surgical precision that you applied to all the numbers, the hours you spend looking into it and taking this whole holistic approach that I feel like is just going to benefit our town so much better than, you know, just the basic recommendation.
Action items. Did you?
One action item. Check to make sure the Arbor Day information's on the website.
Is UDO discussion, is that part of the?
Since you said that kind of needs to be done this year.
Is that part of the summit or is that?
I don't think it needs to be part of the summit. I, I think that's really something our planning director can just lead up a.
Send me your.
UDO revision. Yeah, I mean, we may need to solicit whatever council has and, and/or put together, you know, a small group to just kind of analyze it.
And I would say just because it's, I mean, I was on the steering committee and codes are just such a technical document that just. Send him what you want to accomplish and we'll figure out how to right the mess that it is to get it accomplished.
Well, you know, some of the stuff that I, I just think of are conditions that we add to every single project.
Sure.
That just should be, but let's get away from conditions and let's just make it.
Any other action items that we might have missed, counsel? We've already done closed session, so we do not need to go back into closed session. So is there a motion to adjourn this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone.